Call the order, Town of Prescott Valley. Regular Town Council Meeting, October 24th, 2019. At this time, I invite Father Volker, Volmer, to come on down, please. Welcome, sir.
Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for all the blessings you shower upon us. Give thanks for our first responders, those who have volunteered to serve in order to protect us. Keep safe those who are trying to keep us safe. So keep safe those of our citizens who have joined the armed forces in order to protect our freedoms, protect those who are trying to protect our freedom. We ask for your blessings upon those who are most precious to us, our children. Keep our children safe, Lord. We ask for patience with our prescribed burns and smokefield's burns, Lord. May these prescribed burns prevent future catastrophic fires. We offer up to you the needs and tensions of our citizens, especially those going through tougher difficulty. And we ask blessings upon our Town Council. Grant them wisdom as a plan for the future and make decisions in our present. We ask this of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Well, everyone, please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Kelpalguda.
Present.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Lori Hunt.
Present.
Councilmember Don Packer.
Present.
Councilmember Kendall Schumacher.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna start off with proclamations, and the first one up will be National American Indian Heritage Month.
Whereas the ASDAR Yavapai Chapter of Prescott Valley, Arizona, is sponsoring National American Indian Heritage Month in the tri-city area during the month of November, and whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and their customs and tradition are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas the Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities having planned, now therefore I, Kelpalguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, to hereby declare November 2019 as Native American Indian Heritage Month in the Town of Prescott Valley, and urge all our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Mockmar, and I'm the Regent for this term for Yavapai County, Yavapai Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution. I would like to introduce honorary chapter regents and officers. This is Beverly Stewart Brock, Debbie Lamb, and Dorothy Castanos. We're honored to be here because all of November is the National Indian Heritage Month, the whole month. So please do something to honor or even read up about why this month is the month of November is the Indian Heritage Month, and thank you very much. Bye.
All right, the next proclamation I think we can all get behind is the Charitable Tax Credit Giving Month. Who will be representing for that one? Come on down.
Whereas the state of Arizona tax credit program enables taxpayers to contribute $400 for a single taxpayer and $800 for taxpayers filing a joint tax return and receive a dollar-for-dollar tax credit under Arizona tax bill. And whereas the full amount can be given to qualified charitable organization of their choice and a school of their choice, the taxpayers can use their tax dollars to express their beliefs and values by supporting a charity that does the work they hold dear. And whereas the employers are urged to adopt the option to allow employees to contribute to a qualifying charitable organization from state withholding, thereby not reducing take-home pay, and whereas employees are encouraged to take advantage of the opportunity to contribute to a qualifying charitable organization from their state tax withholding without reducing their home pay, whereas by donating to a qualified charitable organization and a school, taxpayers are in effect given the opportunity to choose how to use a portion of their tax dollars, and whereas taxpayers no longer need to itemize in order to participate in the Arizona tax credit program, and whereas the Arizona tax credit program is a way of keeping our tax money in this community, keeping tax dollars local through the charitable giving tax credit builds a stronger and better community at no cost to the donors. Now therefore I, Kelpalguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, in partnership with Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters, to hereby declare November 2019 as Charitable Tax Credit Giving Month, and for the good of the community, urge residents to keep their money local by making a donation to a qualified local charity and school.
On behalf of all of the charitable organizations in the area, and especially in Prescott Valley and Yavapai County, and also on behalf of Big Brothers Big Sisters as a recruiter, you wanna be a big, come see me. I would like to thank you and thank the council for acknowledging this and recognizing the value of charitable giving. Thank you.
All right, next one up will be No Shave November proclamation.
No Shave November 2019. Whereas among American men, prostate cancer is both the second most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of cancer deaths. Although prostate cancer incidence and mortality rates have declined over the past two decades, this year alone, an estimated 239,000 men in the United States will be diagnosed with the illness, and almost 30,000 men will die from this disease. And whereas one in eight men have a chance of being diagnosed with prostate cancer and testicular cancer is the most common cancer in American males between the ages of 15 and 35. Despite these facts, 90% of prostate cancer is treatable if caught in the early stages. This makes awareness and early detection crucial. Being responsible for your health at every age and always getting your annual health check is a key part of making positive change for men's health. And whereas the No Shave November campaign encourages men to grow a beard for 30 days during the month of November, thereby becoming walking and talking billboards for men's health, to raise awareness, encourage conversation about men's health issues, and raise funds for research programs that combat prostate cancer and testicular cancer. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of healthy lifestyles and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing the rates of mortality from disease. Now therefore, I, Kelpalguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby declare November 2019 as No Shave November, and urge all men in the Town of Prescott Valley to show their support of men's health initiatives by growing a beard for 30 days. I have started because it takes a long time for me to grow one, but it's also an excuse to talk to people about why you're not shaving in the month of November.
Right.
And that's what it's all about. That's it.
Now we're gonna move on to item six, and this will be the Mayor's Recognition Award for Prescott Valley Ace. So this is their 35th anniversary here in our community, so from 1984 to 2019. In recognition of 35 years of success, professional business practices, and service to the community, thank you for your commitment to providing the people of Prescott Valley and surrounding areas with excellent products along with fair and honest customer service. We look forward to your next 35 years. And I just wanna say, when it says fair and honest customer service, you guys provide one of the best customer services when it comes to a hardware store. You come in there, I don't even own a hammer, but those people there will be able to point me in the right direction and get me squared away on whatever I need, and that's, in today's age, you don't see that a lot, so that's something to be proud of. The next is all yours.
I am not the public speaker, I'm just the one who is closest to the microphone, I think. Thank you all so much, and really, we just were here because of this town and this community and the people that are in it. If it wasn't for you, we wouldn't even be there, so thank you so much, and we're so happy we can serve you, and we are doing everything we can to be a part of the community, and thank you guys for everything you do for us, so thank you again, and this is amazing community.
Next up will be Student of the Month. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. It's my honor and privilege to present our Student of the Month for this month. Just to give you a little history, the Optimist Club of Yavapai County, in collaboration with Bradshaw Mountain High School and the Town of Prescott Valley, are honoring the outstanding student for October, Titus King. This honor is being presented because of the nomination and recommendation of the school staff and instructors at Bradshaw Mountain High School. I'll say it now, and I'll say it every month when we do this, it's not a popularity contest. This is a person who is picked by the instructors and the people who have watched him progress through his academic education. Just to give you a, we ask each of our Students of the Month to do a bio. I won't read the whole thing this time, but I will go through some of his bio, okay? He's turning 18 on Monday.
Congratulations.
Happy birthday.
He has two brothers, his older brother has already graduated from Bradshaw Mountain High School, and the other is a freshman. He plans to become a graphic designer or audio technician. He currently plays two sports at Bradshaw Mountain High School. He plays football. He started off as a quarterback when he was much younger, and now he is the starting running back for the team. He also is a wrestler, and he's been a wrestler and on the football team for his four years, for both of them, okay? Let's see, in the wrestling, he started off in the 126 weight class, and he has now graduated to the 138 weight class, okay? And he's trying hard to place at the state tournament this year. He also volunteers as a member of the Student Council, and he has served as the sophomore class president, the junior class president, and he's currently serving as the senior class president, class vice president, okay? Because of the Student Council, he has developed many friends and leadership skills that will follow him for many years to come. He also participates within the community through his athletic and academic skills through the rest, they do trash pickup with the wrestling team, they sponsor fundraisers to raise money for the Make-A-Wish program, and he just simply acts as a positive role model for young athletes. So I would present to you now, our student, well, first I would introduce Court Minor to tell you some of the information that I don't have on Titus.
Thank you, Councilman Grossman. Mayor Palguda, Vice Mayor Nai, council members, distinguished guests, it's my privilege to be the principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School and serve this community, especially when I get to introduce kids like Titus. I think Mr. Grossman did a great job talking a little bit about his involvement at school and his athletic prowess. I wanna let you all know, these are starting running back, all right? Take a look at them, right? They say it's not the dog in the fight, it's the fight in the dog, and I have not only seen this happen for Titus on the football field or in the wrestling mat, but it's incredible how we've watched him grow over the last four years as a Student Council member. He is one of the top leaders right now in Student Council, and if you guys know high school and the wonderful, you know, cliques of high school, it is phenomenal to see an athlete out there, a student athlete out there, leading our homecoming assemblies and just getting out there and getting the student section really pumped up for events, and he's not only just a leader on the field, but he's definitely a leader in Student Council, on our campus, and in the classroom. He is in a very competitive senior class. His GPA is a 3.833 GPA, shows his academic prowess, puts him in the top 20, he's ranked currently 83 out of 384 students, showing the strength again of the senior class, and I just wanna kinda reiterate something Mr. Grossman said, this isn't a popularity contest by any means. This is the staff that sees students not just grow out on the field, but in the classroom and taking on the leadership roles. I do not know if Titus said 10 words in Student Council his freshman sophomore year, but I know now they can't get him to shut up. So it's totally my privilege to introduce to you guys Mr. Titus King.
Well, before we allow Titus to speak, because we know we may not have to, we may have to stop him, I'd like to introduce Butch Miller, who, from the Optimist Club, to present a certificate and plaque.
Titus, first of all, congratulations on your athletics, and especially the wrestling. I'm a former wrestling coach.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Optimist Club of Yavapai County, I present you this certificate as Student of the Month for Bradshaw Mountain High School. Along with this paperweight, it says Optimist Club, or Optimists International. We are an international obligation, and our goal is to bring out the best in kids, and you're an example of some of the best in kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would first, I would first like to thank the Town of Prescott Valley and the Optimist Club. I'm very honored to receive this award. You know, being a two-sport athlete, I really take pride in working hard, and I'm glad that Mr. Minor and the Town of Prescott Valley really appreciates that, and it just kinda makes me wanna push a little bit harder and achieve a little bit more, and I'm so very thankful. I would like to thank my mom and my dad for always supporting me. They always pushed me in the right direction, and when I get down, they pick me up, and I really, I'm really thankful for them. It's, without them, I wouldn't be here where I am today, so thank you very much.
Good job, Titus.
Normally at this time, we would have him introduce his parents, but he's in between football practice and a football dinner, so he's like in and out and running, so that's why they're not here today, so otherwise I guarantee you they would be here. Thank you.
Great job again, Titus. We'll be moving on to item 6C, Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Report. Be done by Buzz Gummer and Elaine Fallman. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor. Here with you this evening, Buzz Gummer, Elaine Fallman, representing your Parks and Recreation Commission with an exhilarating review of your 2018-19 Annual Parks and Recreation Report. So Elaine, ladies first.
I believe you all have a copy of the annual report.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you pull the microphone closer?
Throughout this report, you will find listings of community partners, in-kind supporters, monetary donations, and volunteer support, all given to this department to retain our mission. This commission and the department extend our sincere gratitude to all those who gave, and how wonderful that there are so very many people of your constituents interested in keeping our parks and recreation thriving.
Back to you, Buzz. Thank you. So just some of the highlights we wanted to hit on this year, we were awarded the bid with Yavapai College again to host the NJCAA Men's National Soccer Tournament right here in Prescott Valley in 2020. Brings a lot of revenue to our town, we get a lot of recognition, and that field down there is just outstanding for soccer. We also continued the agreement with the community fishing program. If you drive by any of the lakes in town, you see a lot of people out there fishing. It's been renewed, and people are teaching their children how to fish, and that's just what we wanted to see. We secured professional services for a master plan coming, and a little bit of a secret we're supposed to give you is, survey results presented will be at your November 14th work study of some of the surveys we've been doing. We've collected over $40,000 in donations aiding the town's 40th anniversary celebration. We served over 233,000 scheduled users on athletic fields, Ramadas, and meeting rooms, and we completed the Boys and Girls Club Annex, now known as the Fane Family Branch. And another spoiler alert, the grand opening Saturday will be November 23rd. Time will be announced, and we'd love to see you all out there for the ribbon cutting. The Parks and Recreation Department was a beneficiary of over $106,000 of cash contributions, the biggest being volunteerism. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Elaine.
Next is community and outdoor education. We offer activities that are physical, educational, and that add to the emotional well-being of our town. This would include many classes, new offerings right now, our basic dog training, and evening Tai Chi. If you go through our website, you will see that there are many, many classes open to all ages. Social media continues to seek community input, and we recognize highlights like Daddy Daughter Night, always a success, and Run for the Hill of it, also, that just recently happened, a great success. Look for a new brochure listing all the coming events.
Thank you, Elaine. We like to look in the future, and we've been talking about adaptive recreation. Adaptive recreation provides opportunities and access in recreation programs for individuals that have disabilities. Inclusion is a process in which individuals with disabilities have the same opportunity to participate in all of the programs, lessons, or camps that are offered to individuals without disabilities. And your new park coming, Santa Fe Parks, will have that playground equipment that's going to be able to allow all kids to play on playground equipment.
Now I'm going to talk a little bit about arts and culture. The highlights for this year are three new sculptures that have been added to our permanent collection, thanks to the generous donation by the artists. You can see these photos of the, the noob sculptures in your report on pages eight and nine. These new additions can be viewed at the Civic Center and the Glassford Hill Summit. The Arizona Commission on the Arts awarded a $2,000 grant for revitalizing Gold Fever Days. I'm so glad we got that back. I always enjoyed that. And it's the first time we've held it in 10 years. So we were really recognized and the arts and culture recognized by the Arizona Commission on the Arts. When you enter many of our parks, you will be greeted by a sculpture to begin your recreation experience in the park. What a perfect pairing of mind and body, thanks to arts and culture.
Thank you. Some division highlights. We had 15 new lifeguards this year lead 728 youth through our Learn to Swim program at the pool. Our pool's most popular activities still continue to be the open swim, swim lessons, and the 50-plus aerobics. Our Parks, our Parks Division is responsible for the operation and maintenance of the town's 27 parks, facilities, and special use areas. The seven full-time employees and part-time seasonal workers maintain 249 acres of developed park land. Now for the big stuff, the new things that have acquired over the year. Starting off with the George Anderson Park Playground. It was a new replacement of, of the playground equipment and it has revitalized that park and it came in under budget. Mountain Valley Park, we put two new scoreboards on two more fields that were needed with sound system. And that came in under budget. The parking lot restoration in Mountain Valley Park, Tonto North and American Legion, the parking lots were rejuvenated, striped, everything, came in under budget. The Quailwood Swings, they got swings out at Quailwood. There was an existing rock formation that just could no longer be fixed. They got two new base wings out at Quailwood Park in placement of that. And very popular, of course, everybody loves to swing. Santa Fe Station Park, your newest park coming that we're all so excited about. And that is going to have sidewalks, pickleball courts, and your town's first fully-inclusive ADA playground. And that came in under budget. Mountain Valley Park Playground, developed a new playground environment with some of the large climbing equipment that this town is known for now. And guess what? That came in under budget.
I'm here to talk about one of my personal favorite items under, under Parks and Recreation. And that is being named Tree City USA for the 14th year in a row. This is something that I am so proud of that the commission has done. And you will be delighted to know, every time you look up at the flagpole in front of the Civic Center, to see the US, Tree City USA flag unfurled there. This is kind of ironic that a high desert community would be named Tree City USA. But we keep track of everything and we've had some wonderful volunteers record all the trees that we have. And we've done a great job. And next year, we expect to have our 15th anniversary of it. And we are planning to have a really great spring celebration. So please watch out for that because we want the town involved in such a great celebration for our town in trees, for our parks. We also wish to recognize all the hard work given to our parks by the Over the Hill Gang. This time, they've given a lot of days and hours of labor at Fane Park and Glassford Hill Summit. Many thanks to this hard-working gang.
And moving to the last items we've got for you. We've successfully supported and headquartered the following tournaments. And that brought local economic impact of $1.5 million to the town. The annual Yavapai Youth Soccer League Boys and Girls Soccer Tournaments with over 2,000 players and coaches attending. We have five National Softball Association tournaments. One Arizona Soccer Alliance Tournament. Three-on-three tournament hosted by the Yavapai Soccer League with over 30 teams that generated several hundred players coming from throughout the state. And we even had a British soccer camp came to town. And they even gave one free day of soccer lessons to our youth. The construction of the $1.6 million gymnasium was completed at the Boys and Girls Club. And that's about all we have for you this evening. Oh, oh, never mind. I'm overstepping my boundaries. Go right ahead.
All right. I'll watch out where you step.
Yes.
This is my last comment to make too. And this is kind of an interesting one. It's where the town sponsored a number of community events, the 18 of them throughout the year. And some of them, you already know how wonderful our Fourth of July celebration was. Movies Under the Stars, Extravaganza, we do a great deal of work with that. And the community events that are occurring on town property is another different type of thing that we get involved in. And you will know these as well, Prescott Valley Days. And right now, we're doing Take Back the Night. I'm sure you've seen the big banner of the town hall hanging from down the south side of the building. I gotta think which direction. And, and that is, that program is currently an extension of our national night out, which was in August.
Very good. So we would like to thank, give a special thank you to the council for sharing your vision of revitalizing and building our new parks. It will be interesting in what see, in what the future holds for us with this new master plan that's going to tell us what we need for the future of this fast-growing community and the citizens to live, work, and play. If you have any questions, Elaine will be happy to answer them.
Buzz, nicely done. Nicely done, Elaine. I'm sure this report will be available on our website as well for everyone to be able to see. It is truly well-done and, and it's, and you look at it and it's just incredible, all the different things that are involved there and all the different events and activities that people got to benefit from. So that's a, a great compliment to you folks. So nicely done.
I have a question. Don't go away, we're not done. I would like to ask you to include one more thing in your reporting next time. We know that we're eventually going to have a regional park called Alphia. Would you, in your next reporting, tell us where we're at with that? Because we know that's a long project. But I'd like to get people remembering that you're working on it and that you haven't forgot about it. So I would just like to have a little information for myself and our citizens that that dream will happen.
I've, I've been on this commission so long and it's been talked, okay, that's enough out of you two. And so, and it has been, when Larry was, was involved with us back in the day. And it, it was an exciting time and we're still excited about it. And we will figure out what's going on and give you ideas and concepts of what we've seen. There has been maps out there so far. And we're hoping that we can still update and do, but we will present next year.
Thank you.
Your park that's coming. Thank you so much.
And you'll also have more information through the master plan. You all need to see that.
Thanks, guys. Moving on to item 6D, Prescott Valley Library Annual Spotlight Report. Everyone's favorite library guru, Casey Van Herren. Are you folks cold out there?
Yes. I'm cold up here.
I think this is the first time I've been cold in months.
We need to turn the mic up. We're, we're not hearing some of it.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
All right, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me this evening. I am presenting our annual report for the library. We have a fancy way of doing this called an infographic, so it's a little different. So bear with me as I navigate through it. All right, so in the last year, the books and media, we've circulated quite a bit. We've checked out all of these materials to our community. Lots of numbers up there, numbers, numbers, numbers. But what these numbers show us is that we're extremely popular, libraries are not dead, and our library, our community loves very, very much. One thing I want to, I really want to focus on are, are grants that we've received here at the library last year. We received over $41,000 in grants. And, and that might be, oh, that's great, we got all this free money, but it, we had to work hard to get this money. Grants are a huge, long process. Once we get the grant, it doesn't stop there. We have to do project management of all the programs and services that these funds provide us. And then at the end of the year, we have to do a final report. So I have to give kudos to Michelle Yorteen, who is the Adult Services Librarian. She works very hard, time-consuming time to write all of these grants exactly. And they're very competitive. So it's not like they just give them out to whoever. It's a very competitive process. And in the last seven years that Michelle and I have been here, we've been able to receive grants every year for our library. So it really, really helps supplement our, our programs that we have here. So people and programs. Our staff work really hard to provide programs and services that our community can learn and grow. Digital programs, digital inclusion to teach people how to use computers, their devices. Right, Don? So, and, and our team programs. This year, we've had so many amazing team programs. The one thing I do want to point out is we have over 23,000 total active cardholders in Prescott Valley. That means almost more than half of our community are library cardholders. Also, 57% of Yavapai County residents have library cards. So that is really huge. We're a very literate community. And of course, our volunteers. We couldn't do half of what we do without our volunteers. This last year, we had the most volunteers we've ever had, 227. Their hours equaled that of five full-time staff members. We really appreciate our volunteers. And we have volunteers from teens all the way up to up here. You know what I'm saying? So without their amazing service, again, we couldn't offer half of what we do without them. And then again, we also have our Friends of the Library. Our Friends of the Library help support the library, fund with, providing funding for our services and our programs. And their tireless effort to provide book sales and other sorts of ways to fundraise for us has really, really catapulted this, catapulted us this year. Our digital community, libraries are extremely technologically savvy. We are also solid on the social media. We have, of course, Facebook, Instagram. But the one thing I wanted to highlight is our Ask a Librarian. Anybody can go online at any time and ask a question of one of us. And usually, we're, it's pretty immediate, we'll give you a quick response, depending on the day. If it's in the middle of the night, I'm not going to be up. Sometimes I am up at 3:00 in the morning, but I won't answer. So we have a really good support and some of the questions, I wish I could, they've been really interesting nonetheless. Of course, our Yavapai Library Network. We're part of a 43 library network system in Yavapai County. And again, the county offers us huge support, which you guys found out a couple of weeks ago with Cory Christians coming up and giving me a lot of money. So I ran to the bank and cashed that one, so. The other thing I want to highlight is our adult literacy program. A lot of people don't realize that we have an adult literacy coordinator, Kathy Lewis. She is the Director of Adult Literacy. She gets all the tutors, trains them, so they have the ability to help those who, you know, English is a second language, those who suffer from dyslexia, have reading or writing issues. So we have over 53 tutors and they tutor kids all the way up to adults. And it's an amazing program. And I just have to give huge kudos to Kathy for that. And this is, again, it's all volunteer-based. So some really, really good people. And of course, the big one, Fanamania. That first Fanamania we did, I have to give kudos to Shelby Marks, who's no longer with us, but she's doing amazing in Oklahoma. And I miss her and I keep in touch with her. But she catapulted this program through the space. I mean, this past year, last, the, two years ago, we had 3,100 people. This past summer, we had over 3,500 people. It grew and we can't have it here anymore. We're going to have it at the event center. So August 8th, plan for the next Fanamania, we're going to be partnering with the Yavapai Library Network System. They're going to really help us provide a big, robust, hopefully Quad City-type Fanamania event, so. And that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Casey, I don't have a question, but I want to compliment you on this presentation.
Thank you.
It's a grabber. It was easy to take in the information. And guess what? It made me want to read every page.
Very good.
And that's not always true because we have to read a lot of stuff.
I know. Me too. And it's all loud words, 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 blah, blah, blah. And here it's bam.
Casey, nicely done. I know Vice Mayor talks about points of pride and Fanamania is, hands down, awesome. And you've done an amazing job with that.
Thank you. All right? Good night.
Thank you. Well, we're going to hold item or line seven, council comments, for a few more. We're going to move right on to item eight, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, we've had a chance to review consent agenda. Are there any items we wish to remove? With that being said, I would like a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, please call the vote.
Mayor, a couple? That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving on to item nine, it's old business. It'll be zoning map change, ZMC 19-008, Cavan Opportunity Fund. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to read from council. So if I can get a motion on this, and we'll plug along. Counsel, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that the town clerk to read the ordinance by title only for the second reading.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Councilmember Lori Hunt?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And just for the audience, the first public reading of this took place on October 10th. So now that we've had now two readings on this, we're going to ask the clerk now to read the ordinance for the second reading at this time.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 19-008, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately 19-acre parcel generally located at the northeast intersection of State Route 69 and 169, from C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Service Planned Area Development zoning, to RSPAD, Residential and Services Plan. located at the northeast intersection of State Route sixty-nine and one-sixty-nine from C-two PAD, Commercial General Sales and Service Planned Area Development Zoning, to RSPAD, Residential and Services Planned Area Development Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Clerk. Shall this ordinance pass?
And that passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to item ten, new business, Parks and Recreation, new appointment of Kay Gorman. Who will be taking this? Who's doing the appointments on this?
Okay. I'll be glad to.
Okay. I'm with it, okay. One position on the Parks and Recreation Commission became open when Kevin Trevini resigned, effective October eighth, twenty-nineteen. Mr. Trevini was first appointed to this commission on December four, twenty-fourteen, to fill an existing term with a renewal date of June thirty, twenty-fifteen. He served three consecutive terms with the last term with an ending date of June thirtieth, twenty-nineteen.
Want the rest of it?
Yeah. I have that.
Just do what's there, and don't worry.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye and myself, and Councilmember Marty Grossman, conducted interviews with three applicants for the Parks and Recreation Commission, and were recommending the appointment of Kay Gorman to fill the vacancy made by the departure of Kevin Trevini with a term renewal date of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Are we good? Get a motion?
I, I don't see him.
Okay, Kay's here.
Well, there you are.
Please come down.
Come on down, Kay.
I apologize for the confusion here, but the information we normally have isn't in front of me, so. It threw me. I'm easily confused these days, you see.
Go ahead and pull the mic down.
Hello.
And just tell us a little bit about why you wanted to serve on this commission, so they'll understand why we selected you.
Wow. I'm very excited to live in Prescott Valley. I'm retired, and I want to be a part of the community, and I want to help the community and serving, let you know more about the community. Hearing about it again and again, because I've been looking at it, I got a little nervous, like, oh, am I going to be able to do all that stuff, you know, help? Because they do so much, the Parks and Rec. And so, but I will prevail, and I will work very hard, and I'm really excited to get started.
Well, we certainly think you're up to the challenge.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am, and thank you, thank you for just wanting to be involved. That's, that says a lot. And with that being said, can we get a motion?
Sure, I'd be glad.
Now we'll make it official. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, motion to appoint Kay Gorman to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a renewal date of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe Councilman Grossman, you're up on this one?
Yes. Okay. One position on the Parks and Recreation Commission became open when Lori Hunt resigned, effective September tenth, twenty-nineteen, due to the accepting and appointed position on the Town Council. Ms. Hunt was appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission on April eleventh, twenty-nineteen, to fill an existing term with a renewal date of June thirtieth, twenty-nineteen. She was appointed to a second consecutive term with a term-ending date of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye, Councilmember Rick Anderson, and myself conducted interviews with three applicants for the Parks and Rec Commission. They are, we are recommending the appointment of Bill Pierce to fill the vacancy made by the departure of Lori Hunt with a term renewal date of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Come on down, Bill.
Welcome, Bill.
Well, I'm going to ask you to do the same thing.
Well, I want to thank Lori. Now, I've been a resident here for twelve years, and finally getting my act together a little bit here. I'm a retired National Park Ranger and Superintendent, so I've got forty years of experience that I think I can help the town a little bit, and I'm going to learn from working it. I'm real interested in the planning phase of it, and looking forward to working with you all.
Great, thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion, but first I want to say I think it's very obvious how lucky we are. The volunteers that come forward for this community are the backbone and the heart and the strength of our community, and we do thank and respect you. So now we'll make it legal. I'll make a motion. Motion to appoint Bill Pierce to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a term with a remo, a term with a renewal date of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two by electronic vote.
I'll second that.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor, please introduce. Arda Rutherford?
I will. On October, here, let me put my glasses on, and I'll do a better job. On October thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, Arda Rutherford's term on the Planning and Zoning Commission will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Yay! Arda Rutherford was first appointed to a partial term on this board on October twenty-third, twenty-fourteen, and this reappointment will be her third consecutive term. And we do really appreciate that. And myself and Councilmembers Rick Anderson and Marty Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Arda Rutherford for a term with a renewal date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And Arda's not here, so we'll just go straight to a motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Arda Rutherford to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a renewal date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
I'll do this one, and then Rick, if you'll do the next one.
I'll be glad, too.
On October thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, John Yader's term on the Planning and Zoning Commission will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. John Yader was first appointed to a partial term on his board on March twenty-eighth, twenty-thirteen, and this reappointment will be his fourth consecutive term. And, John, am I missing you? I don't think I see you.
No.
So, by, myself and Councilmembers Rick Anderson and Marty Grossman are recommending the reappointment of John Yader for a term with a renewal date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. So we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion, motion to appoint John, to reappoint John Yader to the Planning and Zoning Commission to a term with a renewal date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. And I've got the final one. On October thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, Rick Duskey's term on the Planning and Zoning Commission will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Rick Duskey was first appointed to a partial term on the board on June twelfth, two thousand eight, and this reappointment will be his fifth consecutive term. Vice Mayor Nye, myself, and Councilmember Marty Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Rick Duskey for a term with a renewal date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And Rick isn't here, so we just need a motion.
Yes. I'll, I'll make a motion. Motion to reappoint Rick Duskey to the Planning and Zoning Commission to a term with a renewal date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Nye? That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to be moving on to item ten-F. It'll be a resolution for Prescott Valley Post Office, and I think we've discussed this a little bit, but Mr. Tarkowski's going to take lead on this.
Just very briefly, many of you are aware that we are dramatically underserved by our postal service in terms of having a facility where citizens are able to go and find adequate parking and also have enough teller windows to go ahead and take care of business. Through the years, there have been many efforts where we've engaged our elected officials at the federal level to assist in getting a presence of the U.S. Postal Service in Prescott Valley, and none of the past efforts have had the juice at the federal level to prevail, just calling it what it is. And so here's another attempt at going ahead and pointing out to the USPS the inadequacies of the service available here in Prescott Valley, and hopefully we will have enough juice to prevail.
And I'd like to just add on to that, literally, Council, I'm sure you're aware, but the public might not be, it literally takes an act of Congress to get a new post office here, or anywhere, in fact. So we have reached out to Congressman Gosar's office, and they are at least verbally committed to helping us out, as well as Senator Sinema's office, and they are, have committed to us to do all they can on their part to at least get Prescott Valley looked at. Whatever happens after that is out of their hands, but we can't, we, we got to at least try. So can we get a motion?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion, but first I have a statement to make. I personally want to thank you for tackling this, and I, let's be hopeful.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed. All right. Motion to authorize Mayor and his absence of Vice Mayor to sign Resolution Number twenty-one-ten urging the postal service to expand its presence and service in Prescott Valley by electronic vote.
I'd like to make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on, item ten-G, Street Maintenance Enhancement Program.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The item you have before you is our Summer Nineteen Pavement Enhancement Program. I think Council is well aware, this has been our five-year pavement enhancement effort, funded with the half-cent sales tax back in January sixteen. We're actually entering year four of our pavement enhancement, so we've really turned the corner, touched a lot of streets, so to speak, and we're on basically the last twenty percent with the completion of this year's program. So just a little rehash, this is the exhibits that's on our Public Works website that we use to follow as our guideline. What you see up there is, of course, the chip seal that we do in the summer months. We start about mid-July, got done about mid-August, spent about a million and a half dollars to chip seal the streets. You see with the alternating colors. The color you see in orange is the pre-chip maintenance. I think we've, I've talked with Council in the past that we do heavy maintenance on the streets that will receive maintenance next, next year. So those particular streets you see in orange, you're in the core of the town, what that can mean is, you know, we reestablish those historic pavement widths that break down, and, you know, heavy maintenance on some localized settlements at utility crossings or, you know, potholes and the like. And I think Council is well aware, too, some of the newer pavements, we do crack seal. In fact, we currently, this week, we awarded a contract, and the contractor was applying a crack seal to Glass Street Hill Road. Some of the other subdivisions, that's all the pavement treatment it needs is grilling of the cracks of newer pavements. So we have different particular applications, depending on the age of the pavement and the life cycle, and how we best attack it. What I'm leading to, we've had a very successful pre-chip maintenance program, and we've already spent typically over the, the last four years, we've spent basically a million dollars on chip seal. We like to keep that as a good number, and we'd like to do chip seal maintenance in anticipation of a million dollars worth of chip seal. Well, the pre-chip maintenance program we had slated, as you see in orange up there, we basically only got one section done. It's just a little more effort need to be done to get the roads in the typical shape we're able to put them in. Typically, we need to do about a section and a half of, of pre-chip maintenance in order to get that one million dollars. So really what I'm preparing or presenting to you tonight is, we've spent the nine-hundred-thousand we had basically scoped, and we do have money in this current year's streets budget for maintenance, and typically we spend on overlay. Staff has looked, and we don't really have a good candidate for an overlay. We do have Florentine Road for a significant rehab project, so really overlay money is sitting there being unused. It's street maintenance money that can be applied to street maintenance. It's staff's recommendation in order to take care of, you see up there in the orange, the areas, that half a section there, we're able to, with an additional five-hundred-thousand overlay money, utilize that to get the, basically the area west of Robert Road ready for pre-chip maintenance, so they can be chip sealed next year. So in short, what we're asking for is basically use that five-hundred-thousand of overlay maintenance dollars and apply it to maintenance for pre-chip maintenance in anticipation of next year's chip seal program, that we'd have one million of chip seal. Few more slides I'd like to show you is with the pre-chip maintenance we've already done, I always like to show that we touched basically two thousand people so far. This is what goes out in post-to-mail to each resident. In addition, this goes out about a week in advance, and then the day before we visit residents. It's significant work on these streets. We give them a handbill on the door, so that if it goes to an owner versus the resident, you know, renter, everybody is able to get in touch. You can see direct contact with field guy Jason Garber, Alex Romero, to directly answer, hey, what are you doing on my street? Looks like a big operation. And just wanted to show you the recommendations you can see. This was on the original plan, which you see the areas, which we alert the public. Over the last month, we've done those areas. As you can see, we've, our recommendations adjusted that we would drop the area east of Robert Road, but utilize the five-hundred-thousand overlay money for Area Four, and we would anticipate with a successful award tonight, starting that next week, and getting that particular area done. So this is what guides us on our pre-chip maintenance, and of course, everything on our Public Works website, so that it's open and transparent to the public of where we're having the expenditure and what they can expect. And always, I always like to show a few pictures of, this is actually the work that's been done over the last month. You can see the significant operation of the trucks delivering the asphalt on the edge, the blade there smoothing the asphalt, and you see the equipment behind, actually the rollers, basically making it flat and preparing that road edge, and reestablishing that roadway width in the core of the town. It gets broken down into the garbage trucks and the heavy truck equipment over time. So here's another look at one of the residential streets, same type of train of application. As you can see, half the road's already been done, and we're doing the other half to restore that historic width. That's what we're, we do in pre-chip maintenance. And then streets guys go back, of course, this is the outsourced contractor, Earth Resources. They do a very, very good job on this and very efficient. In fact, they run anywhere from twenty to twenty-five trucks on a day to run this operation. You see high efficiencies, but lots of men working in order to get good productivity. And one last picture there. This is one that's been in some of my previous presentations from years ago. This is what the core town and the streets look like, that before picture. That was in about two thousand sixteen. You can see most of the core roads look that way. The roads we're doing currently in pre-chip maintenance, the core of the town looked just like that, about basically four and a half sections. As you can see, this was a slide of several years old, so that before picture is basically two thousand sixteen, and that's, the final chip seal was performed in two thousand seventeen. I wanted to bring your attention tonight, obviously, you're two years later, and this is what it looks like in two thousand nineteen, same street. So this is what we started with, and this is what we're maintaining, very much higher service level standard. I think that's why this street enhancement program's been so popular, because our pothole calls are way down, our ability to stay up to a higher service level standard with the investment we've made every year. I think the residents are very happy with the particular progress they've seen. And just a current update of the five-year target we had back in two thousand sixteen. As you can see, the colors, if you look up north, the colors designate which one comes off the bottom. We're, our target of five years is going to go into about five and a half years. We're going to have to go into year six. We're just not able to make it. We spent, you know, a significant amount of pre-chip maintenance dollars to get that service level higher, but am happy to report tonight that we are seeing the end. We can estimate it well, so really, we're at five and a half years, we're going to year six, but only about half a year of funding. So our original five-year prospectus of saying, well, that looks neighborhood, did a pretty good job on Council's direction and input from the residents, what they wanted to see for expenditure in the roadways. So happy to, to report tonight, yes, with year four being done, year five, we're going to be just about there and going about half of year six. That's our current street enhancement program in year four. And it is staff's recommendation that we use that five-hundred-thousand dollars of HERF dollars for continued pre-chip maintenance, because it is street maintenance dollars. We have to answer any questions Council may have at this time.
Norm, can you give a Council an update on Spouse, and how we're looking over there?
Very good. In fact, they've just started paving. In fact, they just started paving last week, and this is when we really turned the corner on paving. So, we're looking at probably Thanksgiving being substantially complete. Weather permitting, could go into early December. But we're anticipating by Thanksgiving, we can probably turn it through, through traffic for safety. But they've actually paved Viewpoint Drive. In fact, I saw a picture today that I hope will go on to November Town News, is that Viewpoint has been, had its first lift of asphalt, it gets two lifts. Kerb and gutter's in on Viewpoint, and then Spouse, they'll finish the concrete kerb and gutter. But a lot of the underground workers we've talked frustrate us, it's like, what's been going on? Lots of investment infrastructure, all the stormwater management pipes are in, and you can see those, and all of the stormwater in. But there's the update that we anticipate by Thanksgiving and fully complete by early December. And it's really turning the corner.
Thank you, sir. Counselman Harrison?
Yeah, I do. I don't have a problem with moving those dollars, but I do have a question about that. What would be the next area that would, you would normally do an overlay on? In other words, if we move these dollars, what are we moving these dollars from?
It's in the maintenance account, so what are we moving it from? With different maintenance treatments, as I talked about, we spent $100,000 on crack seal and newer pavements. It's just, where are we moving it from? It's our investment in enhancing the pavements, so...
So we don't have a particular road that we're pushing off in the future?
Originally, we looked at Florentine, doing an overlay, but when we really got into looking at Florentine, putting an overlay would not be the best use of the dollars without doing a full rehab. As you can see, Florentine, the problem with that, an overlay doesn't really enhance that structure. The, we need to redo that pavement structure, doing the, the heavy truck traffic and vehicle trips there. We need to do a complete rehab. So to answer your question, yes, Florentine was targeted, and then we really got into looking at it more in depth with the engineering. We said, no, we got to pull that back.
So by moving these dollars, we're not putting something else off?
Not that was really slated. As we can talk about, five years, we've, you know, done the viewpoints, the Spouse overlay. Those were good candidates, and we just really haven't come up with a candidate that $500,000, in staff's opinion, was really well-applied to. Not that we don't have some need. We do have some local spot improvements, you know, Lake Valley's one we want to look at for next year. Little spot on Navajo has given us some challenge, but we think we can maintain those in-house.
Well, I think this is a good move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're, hang on a second, while we're on the topic of Nav, or Florentine, so will that just, a different date will be applied to, obviously, be more involved with what we kind of did with Yavapai between Robert and Navajo? Is that what we're going to do for between Navajo and Yavapai East on Florentine?
Yes. Actually, it's going to be a rehab and total rebuild, a little more like the Sunset Lane project.
So what's your date, you think, on that?
Well, that's going to be late spring, but we're looking probably for additional funding to recommend in the next budget year. We've got the design done, and we've got significant utility relocations, and of course, that's got a long timeline, so it's probably not going to happen this budget year.
And quite frankly, with the budgeting and the dollars available, it will not happen in the new fiscal year, meaning 20, 2020, 2021. Okay? Because we still have two very major projects that Norm's going to be engaged in. Sunset Lane and the extension of Viewpoint for one mile. And so, in all honesty, your initial estimate on Florentine was, what, about $3.5, $4 million?
We're up to $2.5.
From Navajo out to the section line?
The latest estimate's about $2.5 million.
Yeah. So it's, it's a ways away.
Just like that, I realize the timeframe on, on money with that. Florentine's rough, and I hear about it almost weekly, about...
Yes.
People walking to school, and cars are dodging the road conditions, and I'm, you're nodding your head, Norm, and...
You always have one that you'd really like to get to in my position, and there's others in place and funding. So it's like our five-year street enhancement program, the, you know, we want to do it all in year one, and you've just got to do what you've got funding for, and that's really where we're at. So, we'll continue to maintain Florentine in a safe condition, but there's significant utility relocation. It's, it's a major corridor that is, when the utilities look at, they said, yeah, while you guys are doing the road, big storm drain upgrades, and likewise, saving upgrades for all the utility service, because look at the commercial development that's gone on farther to the east.
Exactly.
You got to use a corridor for that, and everybody will want to get bigger, so to speak, and do their looping, no different than what they did on Sunset. So, you know, we were a full year on Sunset when we just started here earlier in May, before we even got to the point of starting a roadway.
Oh, I'm happy to hear that, you recognize that as definitely on our hope list.
Oh, yeah, we are well aware, it's just first things first, and always a priority.
Fair enough.
All right. My question is this. You referenced it overall in your comments. During the downturn of the economy, we got way behind on everything. You and your team had a very, very good schedule to bring us forward, and catch up, if you will. How far are we with that schedule? Catching up for everything that was so behind in the downturn of the economy? And, you know, that has to do with us voting for the tax increase to give you more dollars, and I know we have to be close.
Oh, absolutely, and that's a part, let me go to this last slide. As you can see this slide here, we were at a, an 11-year program. As you can see there, we did the major arterios, which you didn't catch up on that particular timeline, because it made sense to do the major arterios, that was year one. Year two is when we actually got into some of the cycles throughout.
Catching up.
And catching up. But you see here that, you still look here that you've got, what, five and four on the side? That looks like a nine-year. But when you look at, we're going to knock off three more of those colors, so when we're done, at the end of next year, we'll be in just a six-year cycle. And that's what I talked about, we'll be in the year six. But to the point, in year six, we'll have accomplished the significant heavy maintenance and pavement enhancement, and we'll back to that five-year chip seal cycle. And likewise, about a million and a half dollars a year is what we will need to maintain our 260 miles with that recommended every five years. So to answer your question directly, yes, we're going to be there in year six and meet that service level standard we envisioned to get us caught up. And you can see, three of those colors will drop off, and you can see the colors will be just at a six-year next year, and then they'll drop off, and you'll just see the five colors there. And that's really, you know, a good maintenance program, without, you know, doing too much. It's a good service level.
I, I want to make the point, I realize we have our, we're blessed to have our new council people, but if the council hadn't had the courage to pass that increase, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And I'm so delighted that the citizens are so open and honest, because those of us that had that hard vote, they're thanking us. And I'm sure they're thanking you.
Buy a job is very easy with the additional funding source. For meeting what I think residents' expectations are for service levels, that's a good, good comment.
And Mayor and Council, if I could also mention, not only has it caught us up on deferred maintenance, in addition to that, you have used the growth in that tax dollar account to buy down our public safety retirement debt. So, we have a very clear plan to pay that down and to pay it off. And that's something that you all should be extremely proud of, because there are many entities in this state that have not had, number one, the foresight, number two, the guts to go ahead and make the hard decisions to pay off their public safety retirement debt, although you have. And in 10 years, it's gone.
And I think it's very important for our citizens to have this proof that we did exactly what we said we would do with those dollars, because that's building trust.
You know, I'd always like to comment, too, a larger part of the success of this program has really been our partnerships with the contracting community. Earth Resources and all of the, these local contractors, there's been a, Earth Resource done some of, most of it, but there's been some other contractors. Copper State did a wonderful job on this pre-chip maintenance program. It's the workmanship and the craftsmanship they have that you see that, that's really a workmanship-type job of saying, "Well, it looks like this, get it to a better condition", and that's really the scope, and it's really the workmanship. And they take a lot of pride and work. They're an extension of our crew, and the pride they show, you can see in the work they've done. It's, makes, I guess, our oversight and management very, very easy. Our crack seal going on right now, you've got the lowest bidder out there in CBJ, but they do it just about every year. They're the most qualified, too. And you can see the work they do. It's very quiet, very well-done.
Yes.
I have the joy of just saying, "Nice work, let's get you paid, and you made a good profit". It's, it's a nice relationship that we've built with, and, and I'm not taking all the credit. It's, it's the management staff that have the pleasure of leading, the field guys, and Alex, and the Jason Garvers, and Greg Bryans. They set up those partnerships, and it's a joy to watch them practice their craft. And you've seen that. Those are local contractors, and they're actually, the low-bid contractors, I always like to point out, they compete, they understand, but our local material suppliers giving us good mix. They, they know what to do, they're very good at what they do, and you're meeting the industry standard, but at the best competitive price, which not always the case. But these low bidders compete, and they do a great job, and they respect that competition, and they respect the work, too. And you can see it in the joy of what they do out there. Makes it very, very pleasurable in your, in my position, to see good work, and seeing residents happy with, you know, when they interface, we pass out those notices. They give us a call, we say, "This is what we're doing", and they say, "Great, that's what we want to see, and we like what you're doing".
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. And if there's no more questions, I'll be glad to make a motion.
Good.
Get my equipment to work here. Motion to approve additional funding in the amount of $500,000 for the street maintenance enhancements for fiscal year 2019, 2020, by electronic vote.
Can I have a second?
I'd like to second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Second, thank you. And that passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, professional services agreement, duplex booster station and tank supply line up sizing project CIP number W464.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And actually, if I could, with your permission, could I take a minute to put in a plug for the tours this weekend?
Yes.
Let's hear it.
Yes.
Okay, so this week is Arizona League of Cities and Towns Week, and we've had a number of open houses already. There's one more left this Saturday morning.
The best one, I'm guessing you would think.
You said it, not me, but I won't disagree with you. So, so this Saturday morning at 10 o'clock and at 11 o'clock, we are going to provide tours of the wastewater treatment plant and of the town's water recharge facilities. So, come down at 10 o'clock, you can take either tour at 10, and then you can come, then either tour again at 11. So, come down to the wastewater treatment plant. It's located off of Valley Road on the east side of town. So if you drive out past the U-Pickett, and at the bottom of the hill, that's where we're located. And please bring closed-toed shoes, and it's going to be fun.
And it isn't gross, it's really interesting.
It's very fascinating, yes, I would agree with that.
And you're going to have fruit roll-ups, right?
Uh, yes. No. All right, so...
All yours, sir.
On to the item in hand, the duplex booster station upsizing project. Now, this project is part of the work that we're doing to upsize town facilities. As you're all aware, we've been discussing the new water tank that's going to go in on the side of the hill over here. The Summit 2 tank that will be under construction probably sometime later this spring. So that's already under design, and we will start that in the spring. It should be finished up probably by Christmas time at the latest. After we upsize that tank, we need to be able to get the water to that expanded capacity. We're going from 1 million gallons up there to 4 million gallons. And so the next thing to do would be to upsize the booster pumping station that pumps the water from the tank farm right off of Prescott East Highway up the hill. So we'll increase the capacity of that booster station, along with the pipe that connects between the booster station and that storage tank. And so, we actually went out for a statement of qualifications, and we received three from three different engineering firms. And with a five-panel evaluation team, we selected CivilTech consultants to do the work for us, and we have negotiated a contract with them in the amount of $249,908. And so, I know that Richard Aldridge from CivilTech is in the audience if you have any questions for him. But I believe everything else is in your, your packet there, and so I would answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with CivTech Engineering in the amount of $249,908.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, last item, sand spreader hanger slash rack facility.
Yes, Mayor and Council, good evening. The item you have before you is for a, let me get to where I need to be. Now I'm ready. This is what, the item you have before you is a sander rack facility. What this is, is our large snow operations equipment, basically our 10-wheelers, have very large sanders in them, actually have about three, four times the capacity of what we have in some of our smaller trucks. Well, for good operation and efficiency, this is what the industry standard is, is that you build these particular steel structures here to hold those very large boxes in that slide in our 10-wheelers. So, in the summer months, of course, they just hang there, but in the winter months, this is what the operations staff would do in order to load the 10-wheelers with the particular sander racks. As you can see, I always liked this slide we found, this is what, we use the ADOT model. We went out and looked and see what other people do. So, this is nothing unique, it's, this is bread and butter. This is what a sander rack looks like for a large, particular, you know, facility. So, as you can see here, this is one that's under construction. What I wanted to demonstrate to counsel was, you can see on the left there, that large sander, sander box hanging up in there. And then you can see, ADOT actually, on this one, they actually have some liquid they apply, some de-icer. But what you're looking at here is expansion capability. As you add budget capacity, you can actually add on and just keep adding on to a twin or a triplet of what's going on. So, that's actually what we've got planned, is this particular sander rack. This is going to be our first one. And to show you what we have now is, this is an example of, we've been adding some larger vehicles in the past few years, and now it's time in order to, you know, accommodate those particular vehicles. We got a new 10-wheeler a couple of years ago, and this is the large sander rack that was one of the, it's in it. Actually, you can see it hanging the other part of, in our existing facility. But this is one, we got a large Mack truck in the ADOT Doneseal, one of the old ADOT snow operation vehicles. This is what we do now, is we have to put it on Sowhurst. Efficiency is hard, because when you, actually, when you're plowing snow, you've got the box in the back, and then when the snow quits, and you're in that shoulder period of January, February, there's other days that you need to have that sander box out, and you need to go like shoulder-back and provide. It's a good time we do that. So, what's difficult is actually the time it takes to put the sander box back in for when it snows. So, this new sander rack that we have budgeted will make our operation efficiencies much better. And this is just an example of our current operation. Here, you can see the new 10-wheeler, one that's hung in our existing big rack. But really, what we're up against is some of the smaller racks. Will we use and repurpose them? I have a slide to show you there, but we're rearranging our operations facility to make a snow operations center, and just organize things a little better as we continue to invest in our particular snow operations equipment storage. We've got a long-range plan to get to a better place with how we store our equipment and have an inventory. So that's what we have existing, we're going to move it. As you can see here, in the middle of the picture is where this existing facility is, but what you see demonstrated against the back fence, which is the northern part of our Long Mesa Operations Facility, the area in green is where this new sander rack is going to go. And then as, and then the blue bays is we're going to relocate. So those will be for the smaller, we're going to repurpose the existing racks for the smaller vehicles. But we would like to continue on as budget allows, have the ability to add another sander rack to accommodate our Mack large sander box, so that crews can more efficiently move those boxes in and out when they need to put it in for a snowstorm or use that 10-wheeler. That way, the 10-wheeler can go out more efficiently for the daily operation. So we did go out for bids, we did use a already-existing design that ADOT's used, so it's tried, true, and tested. And we did receive bids on, let me think, was it October 7? As you can see, the bid results, we had four bidders. As I think counsel's aware, this is very, I expected more bidders, but in this particular market, all of your steel erection people are putting up buildings. And a lot of the contractors I know locally said, "I'd love to bid it, but I've got way more work out, and I can't do it". But I, we were happy we got four bidders, and if counsel looks, you can see that AJ Roberts, where they were at compared to some of the other bidders, AJ Roberts, they're the people that do this, they're the best at it, and they gave us a good price within budget. So, staff is very confident that the price they give, we've talked to them, they said, "We do this all the time, guys, with our eyes closed type of thing". So, we're very confident with AJ Roberts Industrial to move forward in the next couple of months upon counsel award to, and construct our first large sander rack. award to, in, construct our first large sander rack and capability. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions we have about our snow operations.
Any questions, Council?
I do. On the map here, it says a bollard location. What is that for?
That's actually, that's our actual survey point. As you can see, the Laredo well, the bollard is nothing but a steel pipe with concrete in it that keeps you from hitting other things. So, that's our measurement point. So, really what that did was, that's out of our engineering plan to say, you can see the vehicle parked there that's pretty long. That's actually the police response unit that they leave parked down there and plugged in. So, we've got long-term ran. So, the bollard is nothing more than that concrete bumper to keep you from hitting the well, and that's our measurement point, say, "We're going to start over this far." As we continue to move east, you can see a lot of the capacity we have that, against that back fence, is going to be our snow operations plan. We've got lots of plans to, you know, store our blades, so that we can take them off and on more, more efficiently. That's where the bollard is at, but that's all, all part of our long-range plan.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. With that being said...
I, I will make a comment, and then I'll make a motion. Norm, your department, an expression from my generation, you're really getting uptown.
Well, you know, you saw that snow operation we had last year. That was a sustained five, four days, and went in the fifth day of, you know, 24/7 operations. And that's what it takes to run, and I would, I think our response, we were happy to have the equipment. It took some effort to keep it running all the time and the full fleet going. But what I wanted to add too was, with the light, the cell towers put in, we had some extra lighting. So, we've actually got the capability. Now, we've run some electrical, electric conduit. So, we're able to light this area for better safety and security. So, part of a long-range plan, we incrementally upgrade it.
Nice.
All right. Well, I'm going to make a motion. Motion to award the construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, AJ Roberts Industrial, Inc., for a total bid amount of up to 76,251 dollars, by electronic phone.
I'll second. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to our next item, as stated earlier, we'll be starting with our council comments. Start on the end.
I just want to say happy birthday to Carm Staker. She's going to be 92 this Saturday, and she's a past council member and mayor.
Thanks, ma'am.
Yeah, we have a couple of events coming up. First is something that I'm heavily involved in, Prescott Area Habitat for Humanity, they're having their Tool Belts and Tuxedos event. It's taking place on November 9, 2019, at the Prescott Resort. Tickets are 85 dollars a person. If you want a table of 10, it's 750 dollars. You could contact the Habitat Office, Alice Ayers, for more information, or contact me. I'll be more than happy to forward the information. Also want to put out a save the date, not necessarily for people to attend, but for commercial businesses or service businesses to, that want to participate in the Teacher of the Year event this year. It's taking place in, who we got it? It's March 24, 2020. We have different categories of sponsorship. If somebody would like to donate to the event, please contact me, and I will put you in touch with the person in charge, which is probably this person right here next to me, Lori Hunt. We both work on the Humboldt Education Foundation, and that's the, the organization that runs it. It's, it's a great event. We also have coming up our Safe Trick or Treat at the Event Center. And we also have the Valley of Lights being done by the Chamber. That's going to be Tuesday. Well, it runs from Thanksgiving to the end of January, uh, December, but they have the stroll through the Valley of Lights on Tuesday, December 3. And if you haven't done that, it's really fun to do that. I think that's all I have for tonight.
Anyone else? Moving on, comments from the public? Anyone out in the public like to come on down and share your thoughts? Good, bad, and differ? All right, with that being said, on, can we get a motion for number 12 adjournment?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
One second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Have a great night. Be safe.